Good evening. My name is James Kane and I have the distinct honor to serve as your town moderator for this second session of our annual town meeting. Please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening and welcome to our annual town meeting. To ensure good orders, tellers, please raise your hands so that all town meeting members can see you. All town meeting members should have their stickers clearly displayed so that all can see. Town meeting members are asked to sit on this side, our side, of the tellers. Only town meeting members should be on this side of the tellers unless provided with specific permission by me. Residents wishing to witness this evening are asked to sit in the rear of the meeting. All department heads are asked to sit to my lower left to be in a convenient location to answer questions if I ask one to do so. Is anybody else hearing music?
Yes.
Okay, well, as long as it doesn't disturb anyone. By the way, a reminder, our town meeting has a long and proud tradition of civil discourse and orderly debate. No outbursts in support or opposition of a member's comments or vote outcome are allowed. Furthermore, when one wishes to be recognized, please await my clear recognition and proceed to a microphone. If you are unable to get to a microphone, one will be brought to you. Once at the microphone, please clearly state your name and precinct and then proceed with your question. Please truly enunciate that question so all can hear. In order to ensure that all of your colleagues have the opportunity to speak, please limit your initial question to one question with a follow-up if needed. Please hold any additional questions until all others wishing to speak have done so. Rest assured you will be recognized. At this time, I'd like to recognize those to my left and right. To my right, town clerk Sharon Thomas, town council Steve Madouse, assistant town manager David Snowden. Our finance committee is further to my right and I will ask its chair to introduce himself and his colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The members of the office bidders of the finance committee are myself Vikram Chabra, Chair. To my right, Mr. Dennis O'Connell. The members of the committee to his right, Melind Konitkar, Jean Budenhagen, Lena Polito, Diana Bowley, James Flynn, and Bruce Kanger.
Thank you. To my left, town manager Kevin Mizikar and Chair of the Select Board, who I will ask to introduce herself and her colleagues.
Thank you. I'm Beth Cassavan. I am joined by my colleagues Vice Chair Teresa Flynn, Clerk John Samia, and members Michelle Conlin and Carlos Garcia.
Thank you. The introduction's complete. Let's get underway. Our town meeting operates under the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The town of Shrewsbury and town meeting time have examined the warrant and the constable's return of service and both are in order. I ask for unanimous consent to dispense with the reading of the warrant and constable's return. Hearing no objections, it's voting unanimously. I also offer an additional, yeah, I also, an additional motion, operating motion for this evening. Our town meeting members, the additional procedural motion regarding our meeting time and schedule, that this session of our annual town meeting adjourn each session at our town meeting at 10:30 PM or at the completion of any moved motion before us at 10:30. Hearing no objections, so voted. Each of you should have received a packet last night or this evening with a report of the bundling items within as well as additional two colored papers for this evening's meeting. As we walk through the warrant, I will call the article. The Chair and the Vice Chair of the Select Board will move the printed motion and second it. I will then ask the Finance Committee for a recommendation. Mr. Mizikar will then provide a crisp and succinct description of the article. We will now get underway with bundle 20, Article 35 through 43.
I move the printed motion under bundle 20, including Articles 35, 36, 37, 38, 39, 40, 41, 42, and 43.
Second.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends by a vote of seven to zero each article within bundle 20.
Mr. Mizikar.
This bundle of articles contains project appropriations for the first time using Community Preservation Act funds. First, Article 35 is a statutory obligation for town meeting to appropriate funds that we anticipate receiving in fiscal year '24 through the Community Preservation Act tax of 1% and move them into the appropriate accounts based upon statute. And then Articles 36 through 43 reflect the votes of the Community Preservation Committee to recommend funding projects through the various accounts and funds available to them. In summary, there will be appropriating through these articles a total of $785,000 of CPA funds. That includes $158,000 from the Historic Resources Fund, $110,000 from the Open Space and Recreation Fund, and $517,000 from the Budgeted Reserve. Town staff and CPC members stand ready to answer any questions, if you have them, about these articles.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. Comments or questions with reference to bundle 20, Article 35? Yes?
Dating on at Precinct 2. Where this is our first year doing CPA projects, I just had a little concern that we were bundling them for the first time. I appreciate the brevity of the meeting, et cetera, but the community really relies on us to do our due diligence here and I'm just a little concerned that, I know that we can ask all the questions we want, but I'm just concerned that by bundling them, that we don't really have an opportunity to really look into each project with the scope that we really should be. I personally have watched each meeting, so I have a pretty good idea of what each project is and I'm not patting myself on the back by all means, but I'm not sure that everybody has really had the opportunity to learn about each project. So I just have a little bit of a concern bundling this group in particular, only because it's really our first chance to see what the CPA is all about, see what these projects are about, and that's just my thought.
See, the beautiful part about bundling is that we can take each piece by piece by piece. So no one should feel rushed. No one should feel that if we're on 35, we won't get to 39. We will. We'll walk through each one. So I appreciate the comment and that's the beautiful thing about the way we bundle in that we can bundle but still stroll through each article. So, Article 35. Comments or questions with respect to Article 35? Mr. Segelnik.
John Segelnik, Precinct 2. This is more of a general question in regards to the Preservation Committee and I guess I'll use the basketball courts as an example. I think we allocated $375,000, but if the bid happens to go over, say it becomes in at 390, does that mean they have to come back to the town meeting to get the other $15,000 or can they just vote that themselves in terms of the extra $15,000? Or should we give them the, if they can't, should we give them the capability somewhat like the Finance Committee has a fund where they can approve funds without coming back to the committee? I mean, you know, if it's $100,000 over is a different thing, but do we, do we turn around and say, you can, if it's over 10%, we should let, let the Preservation Committee vote on that and move forward without having to slow the process down and come back to the town meeting?
Mr. Mizikar.
I would not recommend that. I believe that when these projects are proposed, they go through a thorough staff review process just like all capital improvements and we try to vet the price as much as it is. I would see that being an issue just being messy. Town meeting's authority in appropriating, appropriating these funds is absolute and I don't think it would be wise for this body to provide further discretion beyond that number.
Follow-up? Yeah, you might.
Just a follow-up on the previous comment. The only problem I see with bundling these is these are all individual items and, and what, are there eight items? If the town is in favor of only seven out of eight and there's resistance to one of them, we're voting them as a bundle and we either have to vote all or none.
No, we aren't, John. No, you can just pull it. That's it. Simple.
Well, how do we do that, I guess?
Easy. You would say, "Hold 35 because I don't want to include it in a bundle," and I would say, "Certainly." Further comments or questions with reference to this article? Do I see a hand? Oh, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Shenwell, Precinct 7. Just looking for a little bit more of a breakdown of what the $53,000 in committee expenses would be for next year.
Mr. Mizikar.
Mr. McGoldrick.
Mr. McGoldrick.
I'll first just preface, as Mr. McGoldrick's walking up to the mic, that all the percentages that are used in the appropriation section are in accordance with statute. So Mr. McGoldrick will detail some of the expenses that may be incurred under there. If they're not incurred throughout the course of the year, they flow down to the reserve and would be used for future appropriation.
Thank you. So the administrative fees of that 5%, that's reserved for the CPC to use for any advertising materials that they need to do if there's any fees associated with legal review, eligibility review for projects, the nature of that type of work. And so it's really administrative fees that would be allocated.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 35? Yes, please.
I'm not sure I actually understand exactly the monies here. So we've got total revenues of $1 million, plus or minus. We've got reserves, 2004, of about $693,000. So that means we have $370,000 to spend. Is that my understanding?
Mr. Mizikar.
So we're not actually expending any dollars on projects or initiatives through Article 35 alone.
Right.
At the top where you see revenues, this is how much money that we're anticipating. For instance, the top line is what we'll raise through local taxation. The state has advised us that they anticipate providing at least a 30% match to whatever it is that we raise. So we've calculated that. Brings the total revenues to the $1 million that you referenced.
Right.
And then statutorily, what we have to do is set aside 5% for administrative expenses and then the three 10% allocations to Historic Resources Reserve, Community Housing Reserve, and Open Space. So we're just setting those aside into a particular account and then in future years, just like we did through Articles 36 through 44 on the, on the warrant, the CPC would receive applications, deliberate, and make recommendations on actually expending those funds. So we're just moving these into different accounts.
So, so to vote on the following articles, we can spend this year approving up to $370,000 worth of these articles coming up? This year?
No. So you actually have all that's available from prior years and what you anticipate raising in fiscal year '24.
Oh, we have money from prior years?
Yep. So the total would be $3,139,048.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Further comments or questions with reference to Article 35? Ms. Nichols? You can't quite tell.
Deanna Nichols, Precinct 7. So with the $3 million, just trying to understand it. So if we started collecting money through the CPC or through taxation, putting towards the CPC funds, this past year, is that correct? Nope, two years ago? Okay. So this is an accumulation of the past two years and this is the first year that we're able to expend the money? Can you just explain it a little bit more in detail in terms of where we are right now with the $3 million?
Yep.
And what happens if we don't spend it? I mean, it's one of those things where you can just continue to roll over or?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes. So again, so with Article 35 in and of itself, this is the amount of money that we anticipate receiving through taxation and a state contribution. So this, at the end of Article 35 that was held by itself, you would, you would have $3.1 million on account that's available to spend for all lawful CPA purposes. What the CPC has done over the course of the last fiscal year, knowing that they had two years of revenue in hand, they've reviewed the applications that they've received and they made recommendations to spend, again, for, for these articles under this bundle, $785,000 of all those dollars that are available to it. So there's always going to be an Article 35 in future years where we acknowledge how much money we anticipate we receive and put it into the statutory buckets that we have to. And then assumingly or regularly, each and every year, the CPC could make recommendations to the town meeting to spend those dollars. Whatever is not expended, remain, is, you know, stays within the individual bucketed accounts or the general reserve. It doesn't ever go away, so if it was never appropriated, it would, if it's not appropriated one year, it'd be available for next year. So we have been collecting the 1% local surcharge since July 1st of 2021 and receiving the state match each and every year.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 35? Yes, sir.
Kevin Flaherty, Precinct 5. Can, can someone just talk to you about the future of this? We've already generated $3 million in two years. So what does that mean for the next one, three, five years and what happens to that money if nothing is, is not being used for anything?
Mr. Mizikar. Mr. McGoldrick.
So the funds that are put into each of those accounts, the 10% that's allocated, that's restricted to projects for each of those three categories. The general reserve will accumulate and that can be applied to projects throughout in any of those categories that the CPC is allowed to expend funds for. So any of the projects that are unexpended funds, those return to those various buckets and can be reallocated in future years for future projects. So it continues to accumulate and the committee will review additional projects year to year.
What's that? Of course. Mr. Mizikar has an additional comment.
So we do anticipate receiving roughly $1 million a year, each and every year from this. So this FY '24, starting July 1, will collect another $1 million. So that brings us, you know, three years, $3.1 million and it is a percentage of the tax base. So, you know, as long as that tax is in place, it'll grow a little bit each and every year. Now the state contribution fluctuates, you know, and they normally inform us. We, we get the final number every October, but we are allowed to allocate all the funds that do come in from the state match without further action from town meeting, but, you know, normally it's around, you know, the percentage that they provide us.
Thank you. Ms. Hollenbach.
So one of the things everyone, we need to remember is that when we're saving this money, it's because it's allowing us to save up for possibly purchasing bigger items. So let's say we had some really amazing piece of land in town that we wanted to save and purchase from being developed or whatever. We would need a lot of money, like millions of dollars for this kind of thing. So I know we're, we're sounding like we're talking about a lot of money and it is a lot of money, but this money also gives us a lot of flexibility to do that. It also would help us with our 40B situation and other things. So it seems like a lot, but all of the criteria in, in here is regulated by the state and all the other communities with CPA go through all this and have to follow all this too. So it's nothing special, just a Shrewsbury. And you can also go on the website and see what other towns have done and how they allocate it as well.
Further comments regarding Article 35? Ms. McWilliams, is that who it is?
Carol McWilliams, Precinct 1. The categories here were determined by the state or by our own committee?
The state.
So it's, it's universal. And then the committee itself, is that an appointed committee? Or is it a vote?
It is.
And how many people on the committee?
Seven.
Seven. Okay. Thank you.
Further comments? Mr. Garrett Bedian, I believe.
Can we ask Jason to tell it? It's nine, right? It's nine.
Excuse me. The answer to the question was nine members. Nine. Mr. Garrett Bedian.
Charles Garrett Bedian, Precinct 2. We say that we're saving this money. I'd like to know where it is presently sitting. Is it in some account where it is maybe making some money additional to what we have or is it just in limbo? I don't know how that works. Could you explain that to me, please?
Mr. Mizikar.
It's a general fund revenue, so it is earning very nominal amounts of interest. There's no risk involved, so it would be like a money market account or something like that, you know, with a couple tenths of a percent of interest.
Further comments or questions on Article 35?
Who recognizes the CPC that's here?
Okay. Article 36. Comments or questions on Article 36? You seeing any? I'm not seeing any. Article 37. Oh, 36.
Is anybody going to describe these projects to us?
If, if that's what people would like, we'd be happy to do so. Absolutely. Mr. McGoldrick.
Thank you.
36.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 36, this project includes the installation of highly efficient heat pumps and HVAC for the first and second floors of the 1830 school brick house and other weatherization measures as identified by an energy audit that was completed in a previous year.
Comments or questions on 36? Ms. Hilton. Hold on one second.
Sorry, Bridgette Hilton, Precinct 7. This is the schoolhouse on the common, right? Okay.
Further comments or questions on 36? Yes, Mr. Ghulie.
Ghulie, Precinct 8. I actually have a question, a bunch of questions about the process. For example, who makes the, proposes the project in the first place and when they do, does that include a budget? And if not, how you arrive at the amount that you're allocating? Secondly, it appears that the money then is placed...
Speak up, Bill.
The money is then placed under the authority of a particular department. Do they then put out a bid process? So basically, how does all this happen?
Mr. McGoldrick.
Thank you. So the eligibility process and the review process that CPC does over the course of several months is a two-part process, looking at eligibility under the state mandated requirements and then a review in terms of their prioritization through the CPA, Community Preservation Plan. What they do is they do have to identify a staff support, a staff liaison that helps them to manage it and the funds would be managed in coordination with that staff support. This particular 36 is through the Shrewsbury Electric and Cable Operations as the applicant, the co-applicant being the Department of Public Works.
I'm not sure that you gave me specific answers to my question. So who proposed this particular project?
So the applicant on this particular project was the Shrewsbury Electric and Cable Operations, Selco, and they identified a co-applicant, staff liaison with the Department of Public Works.
Okay. So did they propose a budget when they made this application?
Yes. So the application includes a budget. It includes a proposal of scope of work. The budget for this is $65,000 and they're proposing to take it through the Historic Resources Reserves account.
So basically, this has already been bid by them?
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
Has a bid already been put out for the actual work?
So the bid has not been proposed as we don't have the funds yet, but the estimate is based on a review of a budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 36? Mr. Flaherty?
Kevin Flaherty, Precinct 5. I just looking for some clarification. If we didn't have this fund, how would the, the school have the ability to have the heating system replaced? Would they, what's the process? Like now we have this fund that they can post, you know, possibly get the money for it, but if we didn't have that, would it go through general operations? Like how would that, what does that process, how does that process work?
Mr. McGoldrick.
Yeah, so, so this is an opportunity to leverage additional funds. So they, without this funding mechanism, presumably they would have to use some other account, whether it was a town account or grant funding.
Further comments or questions? Ms. Vetta.
Judy Vetter, Precinct 9. Just a follow-up on John's question. I was just, the applicant asked for $65,000. If the bid came in higher, could the applicant then use some money, some additional money to cover that to get the project done?
Mr. Mizikar.
In theory, because the applicant is Selco, yes. Otherwise, if it was a strict town department, we'd have to come back to town meeting.
In this case, all right. But I was just wondering, the mechanism, if it is someone that has additional monies that they could put towards the project if it comes over what they're asking for. I thank you for the clarification.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 36? Not seeing any. Mr. McGoldrick, would you please describe? Wait a second, I see one. Is that Ms. Duprey? Coming down on the other side.
Ms. Duprey, Precinct 1. I guess I'm just curious to know and understand a little bit more how the town department can request these funds from CPA. I am familiar with the CPA and did support it, but if there is grant money available for something like this project, why aren't we seeking a grant instead of dipping into a CPA fund? Thank you.
Mr. Mizikar.
I'm not aware of a specific grant program that wasn't, you know, pursued to take on any of these projects. I do think CPA provides us with these opportunities that wouldn't otherwise be able to be funded without additional contributions from free cash or some other general source of revenue that's available to the town. So in essence, this is why the tax is applied, to give us additional opportunities to take on projects that we otherwise likely would not have the opportunity to fund.
Article 36, further questions? Not seeing any. Mr. McGoldrick, would you explain 37, please?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So Article 37 proposes to appropriate $2,000 from the Historic Resources Reserves to conduct a facility review by the Institute for Human-Centered Design. The facility's review will... The facility's review will evaluate ADA accessibility and pedestrian infrastructure of the structure itself, as well as surrounding routes and parking. The District 5 schoolhouse was built in 1828. It is the oldest schoolhouse in Shrewsbury and is listed on the State Register of Historic Places and the National Register of Historic Places.
Thank you. Comments or questions with reference to Article 37?
So my understanding of accessibility means that people with mobility issues or other issues would be able to fund this. And it's likely that we will be seeing many of these in the future as, you know, we try and retrofit our building, historical buildings to this. So the 2,000 is just to kind of study it and to see what's going. So this is kind of a litmus test, so what we've got for other ones in a small building. Okay, great. Thank you.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 37? Not seeing any. Mr. McGoldrick, would you please outline Article 38?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 38 proposes to appropriate $85,500 from the Historic Resources Reserve account to conduct a site and structural assessment of the Prospect Park pergola, which is over 100 years old. The site and structural assessment will be conducted by a certified landscape architect with expertise, experience in historic preservation. The scope of the assessment will focus on restoration of the pergola, site access, and use as a community gathering space. Project deliverables will include the site and structural assessment, design specifications, recommendations, and assistance in preparing bid documents.
Further comments or questions with regard to Article 38? Mr. Craig.
Robert Craig from Precinct 2. Could you please provide some information about the current condition of the pergola?
So the current condition of the pergola, I was actually up there just a few weekends ago, is fairly well deteriorated. Part of this would be an assessment, again, of that, a formal structural assessment of the existing condition. But many of us know, if you've been up there, that there is graffiti on it, and it's in need of repair and attention.
Historical architecture in this town is fantastic, one of the things that sets it apart. But I just wonder whether the current condition makes it more expensive to preserve than to rebuild. In other words, what would a demolition possibly cost? If it costs less than the study, why not start over?
Thank you. So this proposal is for that structural assessment and the design specifications, as well as recommendations. It would be done by a formal expert in both architecture and historical preservation to review if it is valuable to retain any of the historic features of the pergola as existing, or if a full reconstruction is more cost-effective in a way that can preserve the essence and the memory of that structure.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 38? The gentleman in the aisle way up.
Cartehal, Precinct 6. So I guess I'm a little confused about this. Is this just exclusively to think about and analyze what would happen to the pergola? And then another bill would have to be, or another article would have to be proposed to actually do something to the pergola?
So that is correct. So the current deliverables that have been outlined in the scope of work are the structural assessment, design specifications, recommendations, and assistance in preparing the formal bid documents pertaining to those recommendations.
Follow-up?
Do you happen to know where they came up with the $85,000 estimate for that work?
Yes. So the proposed budget outlines that work, along with the estimates that they provided from certified landscape architect.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 38? Yes, right down front.
Diane Jones, Precinct 8. So this is just a question, because I walk up there. Whenever I look at that structure, I always think of it as an attractive nuisance. There's not just a lot of graffiti. You can see that kids climb up there. And what I worry about is that someone's going to get really badly hurt. And I'm wondering if that is under consideration in this being worked on.
Go ahead.
Yep. So I do believe that that is included in this. Again, that's part of the recommendations that I anticipate we'd receive through reviewing this. I know that the Parks Department has, you know, attempted to put some barriers there to provide some safety. Obviously, to do that in a way that still community can connect with the site is a challenge. But again, that's where this recommendation assessment, that is one item I think that this would touch on.
Article 38. Further questions with regard to Article 38? Not seeing anyone. Mr. McGoldrick, would you brief on Article 39?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So Article 39 proposes to appropriate $5,500 from the Historic Resources Reserve account to conduct an inventory and assessment of historic gravestones located in the southeast corner of the Mount View Cemetery, sections 1 through 9. The cemetery is located in the Shrewsbury Historic District and is designated on the State Register of Historic Places and National Register of Historic Places. The inventory and assessment will review the current condition of historic gravestones, some of which date to the 1730s, and prioritize their specific needs for restoration and preservation in accordance with the practices of the United States National Parks Services. And I apologize, I didn't mention the applicants and co-applicants on the previous articles. The applicant for this one is the Shrewsbury Historical Society, the co-applicant being the Shrewsbury Parks Division.
Thank you. Comments or questions with reference to Article 39? Not seeing anyone. Mr. McGoldrick, Article 40, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 40 proposes to appropriate $40,000 from the Open Space and Recreation Reserve account for design services for restoration of the playground equipment at Arrowood Park. The project will redesign the existing playground equipment and surface to provide an improved playground design, meeting modern design and safety standards. This park currently serves a large portion of the community. However, the current condition deters significant use. The applicant for this project is Jenna McCann, who's a resident in the neighborhood, and the co-applicant is the Department of Public Works.
Thank you. Comments or questions with reference to Article 40? Yes.
That's Jay Bryan, Precinct 8. I don't see anywhere here that they're talking about accessibility, as in Article 41. So is this playground... Are they going to be looking at making this playground accessible?
Yes. So that would be included. So the language does include meeting modern design and safety standards, and that would be in the modern design.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 40? Ms. Nichols.
Ms. Nichols, Precinct 7. I remember reading that some funds were being used for... ARPA funds were being used, actually, for similar types of things, I think, at other playgrounds, of some work done at some other playgrounds. And I wondered if consideration had been given to ARPA...
You cut out at the end, Dana.
I don't know if you can hear... Okay, ARPA funds being used for this. And was there some town effort being underway, too, from the Recreation Department, to also do something similar? I thought I recalled at one of the meetings that I was watching that there was an over... there was an evaluation of all of the parks right now, or playgrounds? Could you add some clarity to that?
Yes. So thank you. So actually, the following article, Article 41, which we'll be getting to, is the article for the full townwide evaluation of parks in terms of the ARPA funds.
Mr. Mizikar.
So the ARPA funds that have been approved thus far didn't provide any funding for this particular park. There are investments in Edgemere Park, the Maple Avenue Athletic Fields, Lake Street Park. But... So there wasn't any appropriated for this? So I don't know if that answers your question, or if there's something further associated with that.
Follow-up? One second.
I guess I'm just asking... I'm wondering why. And, I mean, to be perfectly honest, part of it is, the evaluation for these various projects that might be underway or might not, it's great, but, I mean, these are... there are tax dollars, too. So being a little bit selective of how they're being used is just... not that it's not a nice idea, but how important are these if there's other methods to do that that are readily available? And would this Arrowood Park be, in fact, eligible for ARPA funds that have yet to be allocated?
Mr. Mizikar.
In theory, it would be eligible. I can't speak to the importance or the criteria that the CPC members apply to their application process. I'm sure they could, or any of them here that would be interested in doing that. This project application was submitted by an individual resident and then considered through their process. So, you know, went through that process. It was not an area that was considered a priority for the Select Board whenever they were going through their projects and allocating ARPA funds.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 40? Not seeing any. We'll move on to Article 41. Mr. McGoldrick.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 41 proposes to appropriate $70,000 from the Open Space and Recreation Reserve account for the design services for restoration of the playground at Edgemere Park, as well as a townwide assessment of the nine town parks and six school parks. Many of the playgrounds were built as part of subdivision construction of fundraising done by... or fundraising done by school PTO groups. The majority of the playgrounds do not have accessible surfaces or modern safety surfaces. The playgrounds do get a lot of use and are typically 15 to 30-plus years old. Play for children is essential for the development of social and motor skills. Designing a new playground at Edgemere Park will align with the Parks Division goals of continuing to improve recreation areas for our community. The applicant for this is the Department of Public Works, and there's no co-applicant.
Comments or questions with reference to Article 41? Mr. Pitney.
Patrick Pitney, Precinct 5. So on all these assessments for the various parks, are these assessments being done by outside groups?
Yes, correct.
So wouldn't this... Is this something that could fall into the Department, the Parks and Recreation Department, to do these assessments? Because it seems like after we do the assessments, town meeting will then be asked to fund the... all these projects at an additional cost. So if the assessment could be done by Parks and Recreation, we could save some money there.
So what this process would do was... would allow the Parks Department to allocate these funds without leveraging their own municipal allocated budget. That would then, in, you know, potential future years, allow them in their... within their budget to complete these projects or reapply to CPC for actual implementation of the projects as identified, or other funding sources, whether it's grants.
Well, what within budget would that entail outside of man-hours?
Mr. Mizikar.
So we don't have the internal resources to provide this level of analysis for these playground areas. This would be through a certified playground consultant. We don't have these... We don't have the on-staff resources to be able to, I think, do... trying to answer your question, like, could we do this in-house and not pay for it through a consultant? In short, no. We don't have those resources on hand, on staff.
Okay. I just wanted some clarification on that. Thank you.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 41? Yes, sir.
Madhuk Mishra, Precinct 4. I was overhearing the last question, and I thought that this is more than just the assessment, right? Because it says assessment and restoration. So just wanted to confirm that the monies will be used for assessing, but also fixing those parks.
Correct. Under this proposal, it's for the assessment and, as well as implementation of the Edgemere Park.
Comments or questions with reference to Article 41? Not seeing any. Mr. McGoldrick, would you move to Article 42?
Thank you. Article 42 proposes to appropriate $375,000 from the Community Preservation Reserve account for reconstruction of the existing basketball courts in Dean Park. The town's 2018 master plan indicated the basketball courts were in poor condition and needed to be rebuilt. The courts currently have deep cracks, backboards which need to be upgraded, and fences which are worn. The fenced-in courts will also need to have a sidewalk added to make it more accessible. This project will rebuild the three basketball courts, two of which are fenced in. The applicant for this project is the Department of Public Works.
Comments or questions with reference to Article 42? Article 42. Not seeing any. Would you brief on Article 43, please?
Thank you. Article 43 proposes to appropriate $142,000 from the Community Preservation Reserve account for the design and construction of nine standard and one ADA accessible parking spaces at 645 and 645R Grafton Street, formerly known as Camp Wannigan. This will improve accessibility and use of the associated trail systems for more equitable enjoyment by the community. The proposed design also incorporates improved stormwater management systems. The applicant for this proposal is the Shrewsbury Trails Committee, and the co-applicant is the Department of Public Works.
Thank you. Comments or questions with reference to Article 43? Mr. Flaherty?
Kevin Flaherty, Precinct 5. I'm not sure to direct this question. It might be more of a comment. My kids are a lot older, and I don't attend any of these places of recreation at all. It might be nice in the future when we do this for more projects to be able to see pictures of this. That would be... I don't know who we would direct that to, but I think that would be a great way for us to improve our ability to make decisions on things that we're going to make decisions on.
Thank you. Comments or questions with reference to Article 43? Yes, Ms. Dearing.
I'm interested in what the surface would be.
Ms. Dearing, please identify.
I'm sorry. Martha Dearing, Precinct 4. I'm interested in what the surface would be. That is a very, pretty rapidly steep hill going down toward Big Bummit Brook, across the crossway, and then up again. So I'm assuming the parking spots would be close to Grafton Street, but because there is a body of water down there, what kind of surface are we talking about? What kind of protections do we have in mind for whatever runoff would come off of that surface?
Thank you. Mr. McGoldrick?
So I just want to make sure I have the correct... And the parking spaces would be paved. The trail system, I believe...
Who would you like? Kevin. Mr. Esposito, please come forward.
Kevin Esposito, Parks and Cemetery Department. So the parking lot is actually on the opposite side. It's on the UPS side, on 140. So it's nowhere near the brook. And it is asphalt.
Thank you. Further comments or questions with reference to Article 43? Mr. Malina, I think.
Jason Malina, Precinct 1. So I want to...
Jason Molina, Precinct One. So, I want to thank, first of all, thank you, thanks to the committee. I'm also on the chairperson of the Community Preservation Committee that sponsored these projects you see before you. There is one more project ahead of us, but I figured, before we're about to take a vote on this bundle, I wanted to add, clarify some points, as this is the first time we're going through this process. You know, this first started off with an assessment, once the community was, committee was established. And I will just bring up the members of this committee. We have, there's a nine-member committee appointed by the Select Board. Four members are from at-large, and then there's five representatives that are statutory required. One member from the Historic Commission, one member from the Planning Board, one member from the Community Conservation Commission, one member from the Parks and Cemetery Commission, one member from the Housing Authority. And with those nine members, we came together on a monthly basis to review what are the community preservation needs in our community. This document that I'm going to hold up here is Community Preservation Plan. It is the culmination of our year-long review, and we update this annually to investigate what are the community preservation needs in Shrewsbury. We look at the resources that we have in our community. We have, we look at what are the needs of the community and the opportunities for the community, again with community preservation. And just for reference, again, community preservation is the Community Preservation Act, Chapter forty-four B, Master General Law. It is specifically set up for recreation, historic preservation, community housing, and open space. These, these are typically areas which are not funded through municipal budgets. They're challenged dramatically because there's other community priorities. So that's why CPA was born in the year two thousand, enacted at the state level, and Shrewsbury adopted it two years ago, seeing, having seen the, the need in our community. You know, many members of our committee here, community here had actually campaigned for CPA, and the Shrewsbury voters had heard our message about the importance of community preservation and adopted CPA overwhelmingly. Now that we have informed, now that we have our plan, now that we have the monies in the account, we're looking to spend that money wisely for quality-of-life projects in our community. The projects before you have been vetted through our committee. I do admit, we are a new committee, but we're not alone. This does, we are supported by the Planning and Economic Department. We do have staff that supports us, and when they don't have the answer, it gets escalated, just like any other project, through town, through town government, and through town management. So, I have full confidence in the abilities of the applicants to get well-thought-out budgets, well-thought-out scope of work, and to follow processes that are required by law. Our committee is like any other committee that will review applications, but again, we're supported by, by town staff. You know, I think that any new process is rightfully reviewed, but I will say that, you know, this is something that we've spent a lot of time reviewing. This has been adopted by, I think, and now one hundred and eighty-nine other communities in Massachusetts. So we're certainly not the first, and this is now twenty-three years into this program across the state. So with that, I, I strongly hope for your, for your support of these projects. Again, these are, many of them are resident-raised or community-raised projects. This is, while departments can apply for them, recognize too, that departments have a challenge already in trying to raise these projects amongst the priorities of the municipal budget. So again, if you, if these projects were not raised through CPA, sure, they can, they can wait for a grant, but how long do you wait? You're competing with the rest of the state, with the state. You're competing with other priorities. Again, CPA was born for these four principles. Again, open space, recreation, community housing, and historic preservation. So, I, I hope that that answers any of the lingering questions about the process, who the CPC is, why do we have CPA, and respectfully ask for your vote on these bundle and the next project when we get to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Further comments or questions with reference to Article forty-three? Mr. Zekos.
Paul Zekus, Precinct One. I'd like to thank Mr. Molina for all of his hard work and efforts on this initiative. Just a couple of quick clarifications. On Article forty-one, the gentleman spoke about this including physical work at Edgemere. And the, when I read that article, it seems as though this is for services, design services, no physical improvements at that Edgemere site. Is that correct?
Mr. McGoldrick?
No, that is not correct.
So, some of the proceeds of the seventy thousand dollars are going to the improvement of Edgemere?
Correct.
And any indication how much that would be?
Mr. Baldinger? I think we have a clarification.
Keith Baldinger, Assistant Director of Public Works. It is for design services for Edgemere Park, not for any physical work. And then the other portion of it is for playground assessments throughout the town.
So this is for design services only, no physical work? Okay. So I think that's an important clarification there, so thank you. And also, there have been costs, obviously, associated with each one of these articles in this bundle. And can you review, just for purposes of clarity, how we've established those amounts? So, have those already gone out to competitive bidding for the service, and then the service provider is going to assist you with writing bid documents for the actual projects when they go out to bid? How did we come up with those numbers? And how do we know how we will deal with any costs that may not be appropriately estimated? Last night, we voted for the windows to be replaced at the middle school, and that went from one million to four million, and it was rather a staggering increase. It's, you know, the times we're in are a bit unusual, but how do we deal with that? So how have these amounts, how did we come to, to conclude these amounts? And was that through a, an actual bid process, or was that done in-house? And what do we do if, if the money assigned through voting in favor of this tonight is not an adequate amount?
Mr. Mizikar.
So, a variety of methods are used, a combination of all that. So, depends on the project. For instance, the paving of the lot at Edgemere, a lot of those estimates are done internally through our engineering staff, and those are the same folks that do our annual estimating for other projects like roadway repair, sidewalk repair. So we have that skill set in-house. Whenever we don't have the skill set in-house, we do reach out to experts in the field and get informal quotes from them, and we're trying to target an appropriate, yet conservative, and when I say conservative, trying to make sure that we do have enough funds that are estimated in the application. Now, in the instance, when an application comes in from a resident or a non-town source, we would verify and vet, which is one of the reasons, using that same process that I described, depending on, on what the project is. We would verify and vet the application, and that's why we have non-town oriented applications partner with the town staff. We have to comply with the public bidding laws. These are public funds. And in the unfortunate circumstance, if one of our estimates is insufficient to be able to perform the work, just like it would be on the case of any water or sewer or other capital improvement that we've proposed to you in earlier articles, we would have to come back to you for additional funding. We wouldn't be able to proceed unless we could do that in part and still meet the demand or, provide a sufficient amount of work without harming the intent that we brought to town meeting.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article forty-three? Gentleman midway up in the aisle. Oops, sorry, no. Gentleman behind you. He hasn't spoken yet.
My name's Atif Fauq, Precinct Ten. So, this is regarding Article forty-one. I just didn't mention here, this is only for the assessment, but this article says there's a playground assessment as well as restoration. The restoration is not involved in this budget?
Mr. McGoldrick?
Correct. I apologize, I misspoke on that. This is not for the restoration work. It's for the assessment only.
That mean, that need to be updated? Articles need to be updated, then?
What was that?
Article need to be updated, and it says there's a restoration is involved, included in this budget.
I can't hear him. Sorry. Okay, Mr. Mizikar.
So I understand what you're saying in the, in the motion, that it says townwide playground assessment, restoration of the playground at Edgemere Park. So, Mr. Baldinger's answer is reflective of the budget that we have and understanding what the, the assessment would be. Let's say this project came in at, the assessment was sixty-five thousand dollars. Five thousand dollars would be able to be contributed to a future project, or take on some of the restoration work with this language in it. But we don't feel the cost estimate is going to provide us with that opportunity. So you're correct that it says restoration within the language, but I don't think that provides any harm. These funds could only be spent on work within these, the playgrounds across the town, or for restoration work at Edgemere Park. So, we don't think we have enough money to do any restoration work, based on the estimates that we had, but if there's a couple thousand dollars left, left over, technically, we could do that.
Thank you.
Further comments or questions? Gentleman right here.
Anand Sharma, Precinct Nine. My question regarding the Article forty, forty-two.
Forty-two.
Forty-two, yeah. So we are putting three basketball court, and I noticed we don't have any volleyball court. So it is possible we can accommodate one volleyball court in place of the three basketball? Article forty-two.
Are you asking who's going to complete that work?
No, no, there are three basket-
So the question is if we could incorporate a volleyball court into that. The, the project as proposed was for three, and as reviewed by CPC, was for the three basketball courts. So, my understanding is, without going back and revising that...
We are lacking in the volleyball court. We don't have any. So if somebody want to go to the practice, even the school kids also want to do the practice, they don't have single court to do that. They have to go to Bushtard or Northboro to do the practice there. So it will gain for, or like, school children also, and committee also.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Molina.
Jason Molina, Precinct One. I would like to thank Mr. Sharma for raising an opportunity for a future CPA project. So, I hope to see you later this year. And anybody else who has an idea for an opportunity in our community, this is what CPA is about. It's quali, it's quality-of-life projects that you identify, anybody identifies, and brings them to CPA, CPC, I should say, for an opportunity to see if there's any funding, and to see if it's a priority amongst the other things that are being raised by the community. So again, thank you for, for that idea.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article forty-three? Yes, right down front.
Shannon Wall, Precinct Seven. Understanding that the park, parking lot for this is on the Grafton Street side, would love to understand the plans a little bit more to ensure safety passage for everyone that's going into the park. So, with all of the other designs, we've actually seen the plans that are proposed, but we haven't with this one. So I'd like a little more clarity on that, since that is a very high-traffic, fifty-five mile-per-hour roadway.
Mr. McGoldrick.
And just to clarify, that's for the Wannigan?
Yes.
Yes, I believe, did we include? So the, the plans are to pave the existing parking facilities with some minor expansion. The CPC documents did include a schematic design that was provided. I don't know if there's the ability to-
What's that?
I don't know if there's the ability to show those plans.
Do we have those plans readily available?
We're working on it.
We're working on it. You might want to move Steve and David McClellan.
I don't think it's going to provide.
Well, he's, he just handed her the plans, so...
Yeah, but everybody should have the benefit of the same information. Taylor, you got to open the blind.
You want me to send it to you?
So, can you describe that? Can someone describe that?
Who's going to speak to this? All right.
So, I'm Andy Truman. I'm the town engineer. So we did this preliminary design. So, what you're not seeing, the whole design, what you're seeing is basically the driveway that comes off of one forty, and then obviously, the new parking spaces, and then a connection to the existing trail that connects up to, you know, the walking trails within Wannigan. When we were looking at the design, it, it's pretty much in the same area, the existing parking that's out there. There used to be a parking lot at some point. It's kind of overgrown. We did look at pulling the driveway back a little bit, so that people pulling in and out of that driveway have a bit better line of sight. Because as we all know, yes, one forty is a fairly high-traffic area with one, with fifty mile-an-hour speed. So, what you're really seeing, the piece that you're just missing, but on the top, left-hand, right, right-hand corner will tie into one forty, and then this will be a new paved parking lot with drainage.
For reference, Andy, is this UPS?
No, UPS would be to your, to your side, yeah. So it's basically, UPS is onto the, as you're looking at the screen, will be on the right side.
Does that answer your question? Very good. Further comments or questions with reference to Article forty-three? Are we all set with this? Thank you, Taylor. Further comments or questions with reference to Article forty-three? Yes, all the way up along the aisle there.
Carissa Ford, Precinct Three. I really appreciate the work that the Community Preservation Committee has done. Just a comment, I don't know if this is possible, but perhaps in future years, it would be helpful to have a report from the committee ahead of us going through each article, so that we could understand the goals of the committee and the overall process, so that we can then be better prepared when we're learning about each article or considering each article. I, I think we spent a lot of time tonight hearing about their process, and maybe we could anticipate that in future years, similar to how the school committee gives a report before we look at each individual item. Just a suggestion, but also thank you to the committee for all their work.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article forty-three? Yes? Oh, yes, Dennis.
Just wanted to make people aware that we went through all these at Finance Committee, and it wasn't open public hearing. So, in the future, when we do the, these reviews of the warrants, feel free to come to Town Me, Finance Committee, Thursday nights, ask all the questions you want. We, we have it open. So, we did have that ability to do that. I agree, and I, we've made, we've also, Finance Committee said we should probably be putting more information out in the warrants, but you can get the information up in, ahead of time. Thank you.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article forty-three? I'm not seeing any. So, at this point, I'm ready to call the vote on Bundle twenty, Articles thirty-five through forty-three, unless someone would like to have one or any of those held out for further debate or a separate vote. I'm not seeing anyone, so therefore, we will move Articles, Bundle twenty, Articles thirty-five through forty-three, all requiring a simple majority. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye. All those opposed, it carries unanimously. We're moving on to Article forty-four.
I move the printed motion under Article forty-four.
Second?
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends passage of Article forty-four by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Mizikar.
Mr. Moderator, we have prepared several slides to detail project plans for this article, and I'd ask for your permission to begin- and I'd ask for your permission to begin sharing those slides.
Great. Let's do so. Article forty-four, folks.
This article seeks to acquire six acres of land located at four forty-three Lake Street, four fifty-seven Lake Street, and one oh four Grove Street to add to the town's preserved and protected land inventory and expand passive recreation opportunities. The acquisition price established through an appraisal dated November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two is eight hundred and forty thousand dollars. Through this article, four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in Community Preservation Act funds have been recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for acquis, for acquisition and related expenses. The balance of the funds have been allocated through the Federal American Rescue Plan Act grant by the Select Board. This is a unique opportunity to set aside land from development and be used for passive recreation purposes. This land is currently owned by Mr. Howie Sears, and he is interested in selling the land to the town for preservation purposes. Land acquired for these purposes through the CPA is required to have a permanent conservation restriction placed upon it to prevent any future development. This conservation restricted would be held by the Greater Worcester Land Trust. This property is located across the street from a ninety-six acre parcel of Lake Street Park, and the vision for this property is to connect adjacent town lands shown in blue on the screen through a greenway trail system. The town has been working with National Grid to use their privately-owned land and rights of way on this trail initiative. In accordance with the, I've already said, the, the conservation restriction, just wanted to note that that is associated with deed and runs with the land in perpetuity. We look forward to answering any questions you may have about this project, including any potential development that could occur if it is not acquired through this article.
Thank you. Comments or questions with reference to article forty-four? Do we have any? Ms. Nichols.
Deana Nichols, precinct seven. I, I actually did speak to Mr. McGoldrick a little bit earlier today, but I had gone down there probably a week and a half ago just to take a look at it, and I was actually really surprised at the, how wet it was. There was a stream running through it that went under the street and came across the other side that was flowing, and there was this, so I guess a perennial stream. There was significant ponding in the back. It looked like a bit of a, a lake almost, which is not, but a small pond. And this was on the Grove Street parcel, and I'm just trying to wrap my head around, in part, the eight hundred thousand value, but also, I mean, I, I'm all for the open space, and I think, it, like, it, I'm a huge proponent of that, but I, I, I struggle with the price, and I also wondered if there was some chance to have somebody from Conservation speak to us about the utility of this area and what restrictions might be there, because I see it hard, and when you talk about walking trails, I see that as being a major undertaking. Thank you.
Sure, so what we have on the screen here is a land, a plan that has been developed in consideration of all natural features, including water and wetlands aspects over these three parcels. Mr. Sears, in consideration of selling his land several years ago, had an A and R plan developed. We've used that A and R plan that's filed with the Worcester Registry of Deeds to come up with this conceptual plan to show that four single-family houses could be constructed, again, in accordance with all natural and physical limitations on the site. For purposes of this plan, we've used a four-bedroom house to represent the, the structures that you see there that are shaded on the screen. So bottom corner of the screen is Lake Street and Grove Street intersection, then the two parcels situated along Lake Street, and then Grove Street there at the bottom, one oh four Grove Street, with a common driveway facilitating the development of two single-family homes. So this was conducted through an appraisal that we shared in the costs. So the town paid half the cost, Mr. Sears paid half the cost. That was presented during the Finance Committee public hearing and detailed out to them. All natural features, as is appropriate in a land appraisal, were taken into consideration by the certified appraiser.
Is there a follow-up, Ms. Nichols?
So part of my question had been, and I did watch that Finance Committee presentation, part of my follow-up had been the, well, two things. The, I know that the shared driveway is not necessarily, it would have to go through approval, conservation, I'm presuming, because of the wetlands. Is there somebody here from Conservation that could speak to the property and where they are with the approval process in terms of understanding its value as it stands right now? And I guess the other question would be, the A and R lots were done at the time that it had been subdivided. How long ago was that? As we know, wetlands continue to get wet as years go by.
Mr. Truman.
Thank you, Mr. Mutter, right, Andy Truman. So, yeah, we did, the A and R was done in nine, in two thousand twenty-one, and as part of the A and R process, they did have the resource areas flagged, so the, the dash line, the fairly long dash line you see, is the resource area that was struck, you know, two years ago. Yes, they do change, but not usually significantly. They didn't, you know, lock in the wetland lines, so this preliminary design that the Engineering Division did doesn't have any impacts on the wetland. It's all upland development, so there would be no, I mean, there would be approvals through Conservation Commission, but there's no impacts to the wetland. So they are, as current regulations stand by right, development sites. I mean, the common driveway would be a special permit, but the other lots would be by right.
Further comments or questions with reference to article forty-four? Anybody know? Mr. Segilnik.
This is the first time I, John Segilnik, precinct two. Obviously, the first time we see this, but the question I have is, the two houses on Lake Street, I'm presuming the dotted line behind them is the edge of the wetlands, and if we pass, I believe it's article fifty, you have to have a, a one-hundred-foot setback, and it almost looks like that, that's not a hundred feet from the back of the house to the wetlands. So would those lots not be buildable if we approve article fifty?
Mr. Truman.
Mr. Mutter, right, so under article fifty, the, the two setbacks that are in there are fifteen-foot no-touch and a thirty-foot setback requirement to building. So they may need some tweaking based on that, but we could still get at least some structures in there.
I'd have to go back and read it, but there was a hundred-foot setback for some reason.
It's a hundred-foot buffer, so the, the dotted line you see, which is Wetlands Protection Act, is a hundred-foot buffer. So anything within a hundred feet of the wetland is under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. That's the hundred-foot.
So you wouldn't be able to build within that hundred feet?
No, you could build, you would just have to get permission from the Conservation Commission.
Further comments or questions with reference to article forty-four? Yes, good evening.
Good evening, Martha Gatch, precinct ten. I sit on the Conservation Commission, and I just want to reiterate what Andy has just told us, that hundred-foot setback, it's not a setback, it simply means that the landowner has to come before the commission to get permission to build, to put on a deck, to take down trees, anything without, within that hundred-foot buffer. The fifteen, you can put a building up to fifteen feet within a wetland, and in case, in some cases, developers have come before the commission and wanted to put houses as close as six feet to the wetland. The commission has denied them, they have appealed to the state, and they have won that appeal. Shrewsbury is very good about squeezing in houses very close to wetlands. That's why we want to have this wetlands protection bylaw in town, but it is, this land is important to protect. If we don't protect it, we will see building on it, and we will not have that opportunity for this connectivity, and so close to the large areas of open space that we already have in Lake Park. Thank you.
Further comments or questions with reference to article forty-four? Mr. Convery.
Just a quick accounting question, I'm just trying to follow the numbers. The appropriation spent four thirty-five K, the appraisal's eight forty K, I, I'm trying to find the gap. Where's the other funding?
So it's been approved through the use, the Select Board has approved the use of American Rescue Plan Act funds to cover the rest of the cost of the acquisition.
Further comments or questions with reference to article forty-four? Mr. Schatzke.
Dale, Dale Schatzke, precinct seven. I think this is a, a really wonderful piece of property, but it's also, it's also a really wonderful price for it. I, I, I don't see why, you know, eight hundred and something thousand dollars is, is, is a good trade-off to prevent maybe four houses from being built. And, and, and to take this property off the tax rolls as it is now, if, if the property's assessed at eight hundred thousand dollars, that represents about ten thousand dollars a year in taxes, just for the vacant land, not, not what they would be paying the town if we allowed houses to be built. In terms of the connectivity with other town land, it seems to me that it would be possible if we got an easement under the National Grid area from one, you could see it on one of the other maps, right there. If we got an easement from Grove Street up to that ten Elliott circle indication, that that would connect those, those town parcels and make the, all of that connect, connected without spending the eight hundred thousand dollars on, on these three lots. I'd also like to point out that I believe this is for, sponsored by the Trails Committee, is that correct?
There's an application submitted by the Select Board.
Okay. I'm sorry, I was mistaken there, but one of the intents, one of the purposes is for connectivity, and that to me implies walking. And I can't imagine that a lot of people are going to be using that connectivity. And with respect to that, I would point to town meeting members to the voter checklist number five. If it is designed to benefit a small group or special interest while taking unfair advantage of others' workforce defeat, if, I can't, so I do have a question. How many people do we anticipate be using that connectivity per year?
Does anybody have an answer to that question? Mr. Mizikar.
We don't have an answer to that question. You know, it sits across the street from ninety-six other acres. We've illustrated the other town-owned land and, and the interest in developing a trailway system that would utilize this parcel and make easier connections with other town-owned land. You know, we, we think this is a great opportunity. I will say, in, in my conversations with Select Board members, this is not about preventing the development of additional houses. This is about preserving and protecting open space and providing passive recreation opportunities. Given the strong interest in development of this property, or it, of this property and other land in Shrewsbury, we felt that it was prudent to show what could be developed there, based upon just the simple A and R plan that, that was set forth. But again, this is a, a vision for recreation, open space, greenways, quality-of-life initiatives in the community, rather than really attempting to prevent four homes from being developed.
Further comments or questions with reference to article forty-four on the aisle?
Hi, Hillary King, precinct six. Not that it necessarily matters, but I'd use that trail. I'd just like us to consider also our youth. Looking at this map, there's a lot of housing and neighborhoods, and considering that there are plenty of people in this community who don't have cars and can't get around that way, that this is an excellent opportunity to serve that portion of our community, and considering that they aren't town meeting members, I figured I'd speak for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Further com, Missy Hollenbeck, Ms. Hollenbeck.
Melissa Honda, precinct nine. A couple of years ago, when we were talking about rezoning and the issues with the property with Mr. Sears, I looked at the town GIS, and I was really shocked at these little chunks of town-owned property along Lake Street and, and opportunity, you know, with National Grid and, and OSLCO and, you know, various opportunities and with easements, that we really could make a really nice little trail necklace-type system there. And if this is something that I can just look up, you know, very easily on GIS, that there's probably more properties and opportunities that the town has been working on. So I think we're going to be seeing a lot more of this in the future in Shrewsbury, that we have these larger chunks of land, but we're going to need to, you know, string them together like, you know, gems on a necklace to, to make them work, and we're going to be seeing a lot more of this, and we do have these little chunks of land around.
Ms. Dearing.
Martha Dearing, precinct four. In terms of people using that, I travel Grove Street all the time, and there are always walkers down there, and there are always walkers on Lake Street. So would that be used? Absolutely, and it would get some people off that road, which can be dangerous at times, so absolutely, there are walkers there. You know, we've been, my husband and I have been town meeting members now for, I don't know, thirty years, something like that, and it seems to me, one of the things we're constantly fighting for is to leave space open. Why do we have to build that there? Why do we have so many apartments? We've got an opportunity to get a little bit more open space. Yeah, it might be expensive, but folks, you know, if you do put up houses there, and it could be more than four, given, you know, how things get wiggly-wobbly, it, think about the cost to the schools, to the sewers, to the water, to the trash pickups. Yeah, it's expensive, but is our health and our recreation worth it? It's not that much. We know that being in nature changes your brain chemistry, changes your heart rate, changes your blood pressure, and calms you down, and people stay healthier. We know that, it's researched over and over and over again. This gives us an opportunity to help with that. Connections, absolutely, open space, you got it.
Further comments or questions with reference to article forty-four? Blue shirt.
Diane Jones, precinct eight. So this is a comment, not a question. With wetlands, one really important thing that almost everybody misses in the importance of protecting wetlands is that the wetlands themselves may have a, a boundary that is almost always something that we expect. Every now and then, there's flooding, right? But usually, we expect it to be a certain size, but the animals that live within the wetlands actually need a much larger area beyond the wet area, or they die out. It is a matter of biodiversity to give them space. They have to have it, they have to have trees around them. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Ms. Conlon.
Thank you. Michelle Conlon, I'm speaking as a resident and I'm a town meeting member of precinct ten, I'm not speaking on behalf of the Select Board. This property, not only is it an opportunity to preserve open space, it has historically been open space. It was, for many years, it was a working farm, and in recent years, has been used as a hobby farm for the Sears family. And so this is an opportunity for us to maintain historically open space. There is wetlands on the property that, you know, within a short distance, enter into Lake Quinzig, so we're talking about surface water qualities, we're talking about water quality in the lake itself. There is habitat, you know, you go down there any time of day, there's all sorts of wildlife that you'll see on these properties, tons of diverse birds, aquatic, aquatic animals, and things that live in those wetlands. There, in addition to the property itself, the opportunity that presents to us, it's not just about preventing There, in addition to the property itself, the opportunity that presents to us, it's not just about preventing four houses from being built. It really is about the connectivity to all of the town-owned land behind, around it. So if you wouldn't mind going to the slide that has all of the blue, so this is actually only a small portion of what the, these plots will allow us to connect to. If you see, all the way on the right-hand side of this slide is Camp One again, that large parcel that runs between Grafton Street and Memorial Drive. You can then cross Grafton Street and go up through the Crimson Drive and Hickory Circle neighborhood and enter all of this blue land that surrounds the Arrowood, Arrowood Drive neighborhood. One of the articles that we just voted on was to design a playground for the Arrowood Park. Then you would enter, you would cross Grove Street and enter these Lake Street parcels. It is currently traversable. It is open space, truly open space. You could walk through it, you know, in a pair of sneakers. It, it wouldn't take a lot of trail work to establish really stable walking trails there. The sidewalks on Lake Street can begin just two properties north of this property on Lake Street. You're then able to cross into the Lake Street, Lake Street Park property that abuts state-owned land and, and land owned by the power company. And we have preliminary agreement, or not agreements, but preliminary, preliminary interest from the power company and from the state to allow us to develop formal trail systems that would allow us to connect to South Quinzig, Oak Street, up through the power lines and crossing Oak Street further north, take you up to Route Nine. We've identified, I've worked with Mr. DiPaolo and members of the Trails Committee, and we've identified potential trail systems that could take us all the way up to Two-Ninety and then east across the northern part of town. So by acquiring this land, it would truly allow us to have this trail system or a possibility of a trail system that we could traverse two-thirds, three-quarters of our community. And this, these three parcels are really key to that, especially in this portion of town. Land is really expensive. We all know that. It's, I, I really see, I hope you all see the value in this. Because it, it would allow us, we've identified, in addition to, to what I mentioned, we also identified there's town-owned land that we could, where it connects you to Oak Street here, you could then walk along the sidewalks on Oak Street and get up to Jordan Pond without having to go all the way out to South Quinzig. There's so many possibilities that these three parcels would allow us to develop within our community. So I, I hope that everyone sees the value in those.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article forty-four? Just a second, Charlie. Ms. Flynn.
Teresa Flynn, Precinct Seven. May I ask, Town Manager, a clarifying question? We had received information on how many houses could potentially be developed there. So is it three or is it four?
It is four.
It is four?
I mean, in a town-wide effort, you could probably get more in there, quite honestly.
Mr. Garabedian.
If we do require, I'm sorry, Charles Garabedian, Precinct Two. If we do acquire this plot of land with, seems to be pretty pristine, is there going to be additional cost to maintain the quality of this land that is to keep its present characteristic or perhaps even to enhance the development of wildlife there? What does the future hold if we own it?
Mr. Mizikar.
We have no immediate plans to do enhancements on the site. The conservation restriction would allow for parking in case that would be inappropriate space to it, although there is ample parking across the street at Lake Street. So trails development throughout the community is largely done, been done by volunteers, including Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, those types of initiatives. So we don't have any plans to do habitat enhancement on it. We'd allow it to be in as much of a natural state as possible.
Further, Mr. Garabedian, a follow-up?
I appreciate your comment on that, but my question was, what responsibility would we have to preserve it? In other words, to prevent it from being polluted? Is there going to be anything in that area that we're going to have to be worrying about?
Mr. Mizikar.
Not that I'm aware of. The site will be cleaned, you know, there's a couple shed-like structures on it that the current owner would be responsible for removing prior to our acquisition. There's one single-family, two single-family homes that abut this and then public ways, so I don't, I can't foresee anything that we'd need to do for special protection of this piece of property.
Ms. Conlon.
If I may add to that, the, the land, historically, the previous homeowner, or the, the current owner of the property and the previous residents of the home that was initially part of that larger land, really only mowed it maybe once a year. The front meadow was, was mowed about once a year. There is some grass planted on the Grove Street parcel that the current residents do maintain at this point, but it would just be a simple mowing. As far as regular maintenance goes, they're really, it was, it's essentially like a fallow field for the most part.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article forty-four? Yes?
Hi, Christine Matero, Precinct Four. I generally don't speak at town meeting, but I feel it's important to piggyback on who's going to be using this. Precinct Four is going to be using it. Many, many people in my precinct have asked that I voice our opinion on it, and Precinct Four's opinion on it is, yes, we would use it, and we would really love a place to be able to walk that had, got us off the street and there's no sidewalks, you know, down on Lake Street there, Grove Street. You know, a lot of, a big portion of the road can be pretty dangerous when you're trying to run and walk. I tried to take notice on, in this, since the packet came out, when I'm driving home each day, you know, how many people I see. I'm just driving here tonight alone and last night alone. I saw six groups of people, you know, trying to get off on the edge of the road as the cars drove by. Children, older people, younger people. Last night, I counted again, I saw seven groups of people. So, you know, just in these two nights of alone, counting people who are going to use it, Precinct Four is going to use it.
Thank you. Further comments or questions with reference to Article forty-four? Way up in the corner. Just a second, Judy.
Judy Polito, Precinct Three. I'd like to move the question.
Motion has been made to move the question. Is there a second? Second. This motion moves to an immediate vote and will close debate on Article forty-four. Does everyone understand the vote before, the motion before us to close debate on Article forty-four? If so, all those in favor of the article to move the question shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Do we have six people, seven people who will stand with the gentleman? Not seeing any. We will now move to the immediate consideration of Article forty-four. This item requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article forty-four shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes. Article forty-five?
I move the printed motion under Article forty-five. Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article forty-five by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Mizikar.
With the passage of Article forty-four, Article forty-five seeks to provide an opportunity to provide greater connectivity from the recently approved acquisition between the Lake Street properties and ten Elliott Circle, which is town-owned land. This easement over four thirty-nine Lake Street would be acquired using American Rescue Plan Act funds or through gift from the current property owner. Although this easement is not required to enhance, is not required to provide connectivity to other land as depicted on the maps, it would provide an alternative route further away from Lake Street for greater connectivity within the area. So the proposed easement is, has been appraised for a fifty-five, fifty-foot wide easement that would traverse four thirty-nine Lake Street underneath the National Grid lines. It is currently privately owned. Happy to answer any questions associated with Article forty-five.
Comments or questions with reference to Article forty-five? As the gentleman approaches, I will just note, this is a majority vote because the funds being used are IRA funds allocated by the selectmen, not by the town meeting. Good evening. Could you introduce yourself, please?
Mishra, Madhup Mishra, Precinct Four. I actually live in six Elliott Circle, so it's very close to my house. Just wanted to understand what the easement would look like. Is it a, like a walking trail or any details would be nice.
Sure. I can describe the easement. Again, we are proposing a fifty-foot wide.
Are we showing the screen?
Yeah, please, if we could. Sorry to everyone that's there. This is, this is a rough depiction of, of the easement crossing four thirty-nine Lake Street. This shown on the screen, fifty-foot wide. At the top of the screen there, it's connecting to ten Elliott Circle. At the bottom, again, the land that was acquired through the Lake Street acquisitions from Article forty-four. You would, where the easement would allow the construction of a trail and for individuals to walk and traverse the entire easement.
Follow-up?
Yes, just confirming, it's that gray box in the middle that you're talking about?
That is correct, yes.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article forty-five? Yes?
Lisa Bapason, Precinct Three. Just wondering, the article says for gift or purchase, what would the purchase price possibly be?
Mr. Mizikar.
It has been assessed at five thousand five hundred dollars.
Comments or questions with reference to Article forty-five? Not seeing anyone. If we're complete with Article forty-five, we'll move to the vote. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It carries unanimously. Article forty-six?
I move the printed motion under Article forty-six. Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article forty-six by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Mizikar.
So through provisions of local policy and guidelines in the state's general laws, there's an opportunity for residents who live on existing private ways to petition the town to consider accepting the private way. When this occurs, there's a process that's followed by the residents whereby several votes are taken of the abutters to determine interest from the abutters. When a majority of the abutters are interested in considering the proposal to have their private way adopted, the town engineering department within the DPW makes a cost estimate to bring the roadway up to public way standard. Once that design has been completed and a cost estimate is generated, we go back to the residents, describe that cost to them. Through town policy, the town provides fifty percent of the ultimate cost of the project. We also fund any cost associated with the town being an abutter to a roadway that's being accepted. And then the residents pay the remaining portion of the cost of the project. A majority of vote of all abutters is required to then bring it to town meeting to receive, to request funding, to bring the roadway up to standard. Then the abutters' tax bills are assessed through the betterment process or the betterment, which is their portion of improving the public way, is assessed to them. They can pay it off in full upfront, or they can have it leaned to their property and paid overtime based upon regular payment cycles at three percent interest. So under this article, we're seeking the entire funding of one million, three hundred forty-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars from free cash to pay all the costs associated with the improvement and acceptance of this public way. The town's portion would include nineteen thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars for frontage that we have, and then fifty percent of the remaining cost, five hundred and thirty-six thousand, three eighty-three. So we are seeking the full appropriation to be able to construct the project. The abutting residents will pay fifty percent of the cost, lest the town's portion as an abutter.
Comments or questions with reference to Article forty-six? Not hearing or seeing any. We'll call the vote. This requires a two-thirds. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes unanimously. Article forty-seven?
I move the printed motion under Article forty-seven. Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article forty-seven by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Mizikar.
So Article forty-seven, similar to Article forty-six, is creating or accepting new public ways, but a slight difference. So these roadways have been constructed in conformance with the town's subdivision regulations and are and have been determined and reviewed by the Department of Public Works that they are up to public way standard. There is no further investment that's required through taxpayer dollars. We are simply accepting these ways as public ways, and they would be added to our future maintenance inventory. With regards to the portion of Cypress Avenue, this is the driveway of the high school. Accepting this as a public way would allow the enforcement of all traffic regulations on that stretch of land, which is currently not able to be conducted under Chapter Ninety because it's considered a private driveway. We have had issues up there with motor vehicle violations, including speeding. So we look to enforce that and make it a safer environment.
Comments or questions with reference to Article forty-seven? Not hearing or seeing anyone. We'll go to a vote. This requires a two-thirds. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous. Article forty-eight?
I move the printed motion under Article forty-eight. Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article forty-eight by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Mizikar.
Article forty-eight, the town's primary emergency medical services are currently provided through a contract with UMass at no cost to the town. Due to recent cost increases in running the service, UMass has indicated that they no longer will be able to provide that service at no cost to the town. This is part, at least partially attributable to staffing shortages in the EMS field. Those charges could begin as soon as July first of two thousand and twenty-four. If funded through this article, we're proposing to conduct a study to provide critical information to town leadership on the various options to consider when UMass starts charging, if UMass starts charging the town. These options could include contracting with a different service provider, continuing to contract with UMass, establishing a town-run EMS program, or a combination of the above options. Recent staffing shortages at UMass have required the town to rely upon mutual aid from other towns in the region. The service response times when ambulance comes, ambulances come from out of town is often twice as long as when one is dispatched from within town. This study will provide us the information needed to make critical decisions in the future about how we provide EMS services going forward.
Comments or questions with reference to Article forty-eight? Not hearing or seeing any. We'll move to a vote. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Forty-eight passes unanimously. Article forty-nine?
I move the printed motion under Article forty-nine. Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article forty-nine. Finance Committee recommends Article 49 by a vote of seven to zero.
Mr. Mizikar.
There's one change that's being proposed to the general laws. Article 27, which is the Affordable Housing Trust, currently with regards to the appointments, the town manager is able to appoint the assistant town manager or myself to the Affordable Housing Trust. And in seeking to provide the best options to the trust, the proposal through this article would provide greater flexibility, meaning any designee from town staff could be appointed to this board.
Comments or questions with reference to Article 49? Not hearing or seeing anyone. We'll move to a vote. This requiring a majority. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimously adopted. Article 50.
I move the substitute motion under Article 50.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article 50 by a vote of six to zero.
Mr. Mizikar.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like for Town Engineer Truman to review this bylaw.
Thank you very much. Andy, as you're walking over, obviously this evening, we've heard a lot about the people who volunteer time to attempt to keep our town a great town and actually enhance it. So, I've asked Andy to take two seconds to note one member of the Conservation Commission. Mr. Truman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, as you mentioned, this is a volunteer position and our chairman, John Osrowski, who was kind enough to cover for Commissioner in the interim while his position was filled, is no longer looking to renew that position. He's been on the commission for 38 years now, so we think he's served the town very well and we just wanted to acknowledge and appreciate his help. So, there will be a position open on the Conservation Commission in July and we would encourage anybody that would like to get on that commission to reach out to myself or the Conservation Commission and we can certainly help you with ideas what the job entails. So, I just want to take that time to acknowledge our chairman who will be retiring at the end of next month.
Article 50.
Thanks, Mr. Moderator. So, as, as I mentioned, Shrewsbury is one of the few municipalities that does not have a wetland bylaw. Two-thirds of most cities and towns in the state have a wetlands bylaw. So, on a special meeting this year, May 4th, 2023, the commission voted five to zero to approve the bylaw that is before you today. Currently under the Wetlands Protection Act, the commission regulates any work adjacent to the wetlands, anything within 100 feet of the wetlands. The commission has also had a longstanding policy and setbacks to these resource areas that have sought many applicants to adhere to. As developable land in the town without wetlands becomes rarer, we are finding applicants are pushing the limits of these policies. If the commission denies a project, as Martha mentioned earlier, the developers simply go to DEP and file for a superseding order conditions, at which point the commission loses all control of the project. Historically, DEP used to help support the policies of the commission. However, we are finding more and more often that they are simply just issuing superseding order of conditions. Equally with enforcement and violations of the Wetlands Protection Act, while the commission does initiate the enforcement, they really don't have any enforcement power right now. And again, we rely heavily on DEP to help us enforcement. DEP, like many agencies, is spread thin, so unless the enforcement is an egregious violation of the Wetlands Protect, we are finding that they are really not supporting us in this. So, a lot of these enforcement policies go unchecked. So, the simple point of this bylaw is really to just solidify those setbacks and policies that the commission has had historically that, you know, we would like to memorialize in this. So, those are basically, you know, the 15-foot setback and the 30-foot setback. The bylaw will also allow the commission to charge a nominal fee for applications. Currently under the Wetlands Protection Act, we receive $57 for a typical permit, which has to cover staff's costs as well as processing setting the application. So, this increase in fee, which will be determined by the commission at a later date, would help to be used for resource protection and education and outreach investments. So, in summary, really, you know, if we, this bylaw approved tonight, it will give the commission a lot more control of the town's own wetland resource areas. So, at this point, I'm happy to answer any questions and I would ask for your support in approving this bylaw this evening.
Town meeting members, further questions with reference to Article 50? This is the substitute motion that you folks have in green. Comments or questions with reference to Article 50? I'm not seeing any. This, are you seeing some?
I am not. Just looking at you, sir.
With reference to Article 50, this is a general bylaw requiring a simple majority. We'll call the, oh, Mr. Segalnick.
John Segalnick, Precinct Two. The article is titled "The Wetlands Protection Bylaw." However, in Section 1, the purpose, it says it includes joining upland areas in the town of Shrewsbury, which gives me the impression that's every square foot of the town of Shrewsbury if you include the uplands. And I guess, why does that have to be in there if we're only talking about wetlands and the purpose of needing to put it in there?
So, the uplands really refers to that 100-foot buffer that I was talking to. So, obviously, the wetlands themselves are valuable resource, but as, you know, we've discussed earlier, they need that extra, as we call upland, which is the first 100 feet to the wetland. That provides a substantial buffer for wetland resources and vegetable life and wildlife too. So, we would be looking to protect that buffer. Right now, really, it's, anything within the buffer is not really regulated. It's, it has to be permitted, but there's no real regulations for it.
John Segalnick.
But the true definition of an upland is any high-ground area. It's not a 100-foot buffer. So, basically, it would encompass everything in town.
Well, I don't think that's the intent.
Could it be reworded?
It certainly could and maybe, you know, it mirrors the Wetlands Protection Act, so when we get into the rules and regulations, we could certainly reword it. But it's really for that 100-feet buffer.
Further comments or questions with reference to the substitute motion under Article 50? Not hearing or seeing any. We'll call the vote. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? 50 passes unanimously. Article 51, 52, 53, and 54 are zoning articles, each requiring two-thirds and each will be taken separately. I have been handed a communication to the town clerk from Mr. Stephen M. Rodeleakis, acting chairman of the Shrewsbury Planning Board, indicating that a public hearing was held and the planning board is in support of Articles 50, 52, 53, and 54. Article 51.
I move the printed motion under Article 51.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article 51 by a vote of six to zero.
Mr. Mizikar. Mr. McGoldrick?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article 51 proposes to remove footnote 26 from the use table. What this will do is we'll remove the 3,500 gross square foot limit on non-gasoline sales uses accessory to a gasoline service station. It will remain as a special permit through the zoning board of appeals for regulatory control. Currently, this limitation only exists for the limited industrial district and not for the commercial business district, which is the only other district that allows gasoline service stations currently. What we see this article doing is promoting modern gasoline service station development models where the retail component is the primary economic driver for those stations and the actual gasoline service is more as an attractant to drive traffic to that retail location or other associated businesses with that gasoline service station.
Comments or questions with reference to Article 51? Not hearing or seeing anyone. This requiring a two-thirds vote. We'll move to the vote. All those in favor of Article 51 shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No. The ayes have it unanimously. Article 52.
I move the printed motion under Article 52.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article 52 by a vote of six is to zero.
I'm in receipt of that letter from the planning board in support of Article 52. Mr. McGoldrick.
Moderator. So, Article 52 proposes to establish within the zoning bylaw a definition for adult day health. What adult day health is, is an alternative care model to traditional nursing homes. What we see this proposal doing is supporting an aging in place as well as important, providing an important community resource to the community. I'll go a little bit further into the definition of what adult day health is. The proposed definition is an establishment licensed by the Division of Healthcare Facility licensure or, and certification, which offers a flexible day alternative to nursing or other long-term care facilities where participants are offered a variety of therapeutic, social, and recreational activities both onsite and in the community. Participants are typically facing challenges that require nursing oversight and support or would otherwise benefit from a socialization program that is activity-based.
Comments or questions with reference to Article 52? Article 52. Not hearing or seeing anyone. This requiring a two-thirds vote. We'll move to the vote. All those in favor of Article 52 shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous. Article 53.
I move the printed motion under Article 53.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article 53 by a vote of six is to zero.
I'm in receipt of the same letter of the planning board in support of Article 53. Mr. McGoldrick.
Mr. Moderator, Article 53 proposes to establish a commercial rental equipment use within the zoning bylaw. This will add commercial rental equipment to the definitions and to the Route 20 overlay district. We see this as supporting a lower-impact commercial and industrial-type use within that district and providing for that economic development in the Route 20 overlay district.
Comments or question with reference to Article 53? Not hearing or seeing anyone. We'll move to a vote. This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We're unanimous. Article 54, a substitute motion.
I move the substitute motion under Article 54.
Second.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends Article 54 by a vote of six is to zero.
I draw your attention to the pink sheets. Mr. McGoldrick.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Almost there. So, Article 54 proposes to define and incorporate the battery energy storage use into the existing solar photovoltaic bylaw. What this will do is provide regulatory control while promoting the implementation of this new technology. It aligns with the sustainability goals of the community through promoting alternative energy solutions and peak-demand operations. In terms of the substitute motion, the language was updated to incorporate what was heard throughout the public hearing process with the planning board and Finance Committee. Language that was proposed and the changes that were made, I'll summarize now. So, the changes incorporate specific reference to the NFPA 855, which are the National Fire Protection Standards for Battery Energy Storage Facilities. It adds language requiring SELCO ownership and power purchase agreement for battery energy storage facilities. It increases the small-scale battery energy storage system from 80 kilowatts to 280 kilowatts to allow for the expansion in commercial capacity, which would be replacing existing gasoline backup generators. And as the technology improves, that capacity will be needed. Additionally, it adjusts slightly the residential abutter setback to only affect the abutting lot line. As it was originally written, the increase for any of these abutting residential districts increases the setback of these facilities to 50 feet on all sides. What the adjusted language has that doing is only on the residential side. Does it increase the 50? On the other districts, if it abuts the commercial and industrial, it can remain at the original setbacks as proposed. And that is the...
Very good. Regarding Article 54, I am in receipt of that same letter from Stephen Rodeleakis in support of Article 54 as a result of the unanimous vote of the planning board. Comments or questions with reference to Article 54, a zoning bylaw?
Ms. Hollenbach.
Melissa Hollenbach, Precinct Nine. Did SELCO have any input into this at all?
Correct. So, the language that was proposed and was incorporated in the substitute motion incorporates suggested language from SELCO.
Further comments or questions with reference to Article 54? Not hearing or seeing any. I'll go to the vote. This requiring a two-thirds. All those in favor of Article 54 shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No. It's adopted unanimously. It appears that we have come to the end of our warrant for the annual town meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor shall signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you all very much. Have a great night.